President of Newbury, this is the Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals. It's Thursday night, October 21st, 7:30. And I'm Eric Spahn, the Chair. We have Mario Carnavale, who's a member. Elaine Baker is a member, and she is not here tonight. So Jack Kelly will be taking the voting member position. And we have our new member, welcome, Rochelle.
Thank you.
Is it Wiedler?
Widler.
Widler.
Yep.
I detected right, Widler. And we have Larry Murphy from the liaison from the planning board. Martha Taylor from the planning board of administration. And our administrator, Chrissy Popekry. So, let's open the public hearing, and here are the first.
Okay, tonight, we're going to talk about 6th Parker Street. Applicant is requesting a special permit finding for the relief from Section 97-10A 1B of the Newbury zoning bylaws in order to demolish and rebuild an existing nonconforming garage as a proposed reconstruction will increase the nonconforming nature of the existing structure on the lot located at 6th Parker Street, Newbury, Mass. Assessors Matt U, 07, Lot 40.
Good evening.
Chrissy, just do you want to...
I had proof of posting in the newspaper for both the weeks that was required, and all the others' comments that you would notify.
Great.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. My name is Philip Schrepler. I'm an attorney for Finnery Nicholson. I'm here today on behalf of Galen Selkirk, who is here with me today. The applicant and the owner of the property at 6th Parker Street. Currently, the property has a nonconforming garage on it that actually sits approximately 1.2 feet past the rear of, and in fact, encroaches on, the rear of Utter's property. This gives us a rear setback of negative 1.2 feet. What we're proposing to do is move the garage entirely onto our lot, giving a rear setback, an improved rear setback of 1.5, although that is still short of the 10-foot generally expected. When we spoke with Mr. Bennett, he indicated that if we were simply moving the garage, that would simply be as right. However, we're also seeking to increase the size of the garage to accommodate more modern vehicles, modernize the building, from its current 261 square feet to 364 square feet. And due to the fact we're enlarging it, we would need to come before you for a special permit. And that's why we're here. We're looking for a special permit to rebuild the garage slightly larger and entirely on our lot. And as you know, in examining the special permit, the board has asked whether the new use or location is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the currently existing nonconformity. In this case, we're eliminating an encroachment, and in fact, Ms. Selkirk has spoken with the neighbors and has brought tonight a petition, which I'd like to submit to the board, that is signed by her neighbors in support of this. Sure. I have multiple copies. Everybody gets one. Within the package you have at yourself, there are photographs of the existing garage. And while beauty may be in the eye of the beholder, I would argue the proposed reconstruction is going to be more aesthetically pleasing. It'll be nicer to look at, it'll look better for the neighborhood, and it'll increase abutting property values, as well as ultimately result in greater tax revenues for the town. So, everybody, everybody wins. And so, as the project removes an encroachment, reduces the nonconformity as a rear setback, and in my humble opinion, will beautify the neighborhood, and it also enjoys the abut support, I would ask you to grant a special permit.
Great.
Thank you.
Any reason 1.5? Any additional setback?
Well, so, the reason that we've... If I can approach this, so we can actually see what we're looking at. So, the reason we didn't go with 1.5, or we did 1.5, is the hard line here is where the new garage would be. If we roll it forward, there's a window to this sort of cabana here, and it's the only window on that side. And if we move this forward, it blocks the sunlight. And I've also been told that my client enjoys gardening and puts, you know, flower boxes and things along this area. We move this forward, you're blocking sunlight there, and we end up, rather than sort of a flowered or vegetated area, it's just shadowed, you know, almost the entire day. You're not going to be able to grow anything. And frankly, aesthetically, you're going to lose out by moving this forward and ending up with sort of that hall.
Eric. So, in demolishing rebuilding this house, this is, is that now a single-family resident?
I'm sorry, what are we looking at?
The house.
Well, the house is a separate project that's been ongoing for some time. Well, we're here tonight on this, on just particularly this.
Understood.
Going up that larger...
Asking the question.
Yeah, it's currently under reconstruction for a while.
That's a single-family house?
Is it a single-family?
Yes, I was actually grandfathered in in Zone R2. I gave up that ability to be R2, just to be able to have a single-family house, the pool house, and then it's a single-car garage that you could either have a Lippuccin or VW, something very small, go in there. So, I gave up the R2 zoning in order to be able to have the architecture that I wanted there. It is not, so that is a pool house.
Yeah, the pool house had come before us previously in the past.
As sort of a side benefit, it might not be initially noticeable. There's a chain-link fence at the rear of Utter's, which is actually interrupted by the existing garage. They move this forward, if they want to, they can connect it and fill in this area. It's kind of a large hedge, and now they'll be able to, if they so desire, complete that. And, you know, to sort of frame their lot more neatly.
And the pool house is just a pool house for your single-family use there?
It is. It is on separate lodging. And by relocating the garage, it keeps sort of a zigzag, and it makes a nice back for the neighbors. My lovely neighbors, their leach field backs up to that chain-link fence and behind the garage, and my leach field is to the right. So, it's sort of a nice way of defining the spot while also improving the value by getting my structure off of their property.
Board members, any comments? Mario?
With respect to the neighbors, is there anyone opposed? Is this all the neighbors? Do we know? I mean, it's kind of hard to...
Well, the Billbies are moving. They have the closing date, so I didn't bother getting their signature. The neighbors, there's a little purple poster note I put on one of the sheets. That is Tom and Ferris. They're the ones on which my garage actually above...
Are here this evening.
Sorry, we're fine. So, they're the ones that would be most affected. Bill and Christine Orphan, they are, if you're looking at the street, they're to my left. They have signed. Anthony and Shannon, they live to my right. They have signed. Cheryl Caldwell, the Realtor, she lives directly across. She has signed. The Billbies, as I said, they are moving. And then Alex and, I'm blanking on his wife's name, but they have signed. So, that is everybody within the radius.
Thank you.
What's the proposed cladding on the garage? The proposed siding on the garage?
Oh, it's just going to be some shakes and just regular siding, just cedar shakes on the front, just to match the aesthetic of the cabana and the current structure that I'm building.
Okay, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak for the project? Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak against the project? Nobody for, nobody against?
Well, we are for it. I don't want to quack, but we are for it.
Oh, if you'd like, you just stand up and say your name and say your for.
I'm sorry. Tom McReyn, I'm the fellow whose house is on, her house is on the front. We don't have everyone here, but she has.
Thank you. Would you like to hear, you know, show off for the record that you actually were here?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Any more discussion? Close the meeting? I only ask because it came before us before, and that house was an older two-family with a second outside stair access, and then there was the cabana, and the cabana was a little bigger, and with the showers and accessory apartment questions. And so, in terms of improvements or what was existing on the lot for the size and location, just trying to understand how many either nonconformities or conformities were on the lot, that's all. So, that's why I was asking those questions. I don't have any other questions.
Motion, if you like.
Sure.
I make a motion to grant a special permit finding to allow for the demolition of the pre-existing nonconforming garage, which is 271 square feet, and for the reconstruction of the new garage at 364 square feet, being that it is not more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Champagne, no.
I'd like to see them finish the front entrance on your house, looking for the little... I'm sure you are too.
They cannot find where they're manufacturing the cedar shakes anymore. That's what we're waiting on.
Got it.
And it's not even backwards. It's like, they're not manufacturing, I'm like, you're kidding, right? It's always the front, it's the last.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so now we have no more public hearings. We close the public hearing. We'll go to old business, which is 23 Central Street, AL Prime. We had asked Town Council to draft the decision. Town Council's drafted the decision. We all received a copy of it. Does anybody have any comments or edits? And if you do or don't tonight, if you plan this, is that we'd like to have Town Council here as we review and adopt it. So, what we're proposing is to have a meeting next week, next Thursday, 7:30.
Let's see if Brian's actually available then. Let's see him there.
Yep. So, let's say Wednesday or Thursday, and we'll try to figure this out.
Yeah, the room, right now, it looks like the room is available both Wednesday and Thursday next week in the evening. So, I could contact Brian, if you can contact Elaine.
Yep. Try to do that by tomorrow.
Okay. And, you know, it might be that he would zoom in if that's all right with you, as opposed to appearing in person.
So, as there are only three voting members and two members constitute a quorum, you cannot have, two of us can't get together and discuss or debate an application before us. So, if there's an issue about a procedure, or you want to discuss something in the bylaws that doesn't relate to an application, we certainly can do that. But if it's a question and has some opinion as to whether this or that, then you really should just email the question to Martha, and Martha can be the one that can email it, disseminate it to the whole team if needed.
Depending also to Chrissy.
Are we going to lose you at some point, Martha?
What?
Are you going away some point? Are you on the ZK now?
I mean, probably for, you know, interface with Town Council, that would probably be me. I think for administrative things, it'll be Chrissy, so it'll be...
Okay. Just kidding. So, I propose that if anybody has any edits or comments on this, that you email them to Martha sooner than later, so that we can set up the meeting and have Brian here and officially review it, adopt it, sign it. Yeah? So, moving on to other business, we have 60 Newbury Port Turnpike, Save the Pink House. Information introduction, Rochelle Joseph, President, Save the Pink House. Come on forward. It's your big chance. You can just take a seat if you want. You don't have to stand up.
All righty, so, my name's Rochelle Joseph, and I am the president of Support the Pink House League, which was originally a grassroots residence movement that kind of was born out of the community's desire to save the pink house. I don't know if there's anybody who's not familiar with the pink house. So, but because of the community's real desire, this group was born, and our mission became keeping it from demolition, which we succeeded in in the first year, and then trying to shepherd a solution so that it could transfer to new ownership and be restored in perpetuity. And it's owned by the Fish and Wildlife, US Fish and Wildlife, or USA, you know, kind of under Pabli or the Refuge, and they, we are in an agreement with them. They're very excited and optimistic about this, as are we, so things are moving very quickly now, and thank goodness, because it's been quite a while, and time has really become a factor. You know, the house is stable inside, but going through another winter and all, just because there's been so many steps, and this is the first, really, to subdivide the land. And to do so, to get the plan going, we need to have a simple variance. So, that is all it is, is we are trying, it's not about the house itself so much, but it is about, that we are trying to take the existing property and carve out a small lot that is, I don't know this lingo, but it is nonconforming within nonconforming, so it does not create any more nonconformity, but that is detail for...
Quite in detail and detail.
Yeah, I can actually add a little bit about that, if you like.
Please.
Do you want her to add it?
Sure, we're just trying to get an understanding since sometimes when we're presented with unique situations within the bylaw which are not common, then there's some understanding that needs to develop, because I feel like this is a new situation.
Sure.
This isn't something that we deal with all the time, or even anytime. So, some of those take a little bit to get going, and of the understanding of time that you had mentioned, we just invited you here so that we could get a little heads up, and we also understand that the town, other entities in town have been involved in this.
Right, Historical Commission has, and Town Council has also been involved.
And so, we have the plans written up in one day, and, you know, the blessing and partnership of Fish and Wildlife, and we are very grateful to have the opportunity to be here, so that we could potentially have addressed this in the next month's meeting. And we did file all those documents with the town and gave a package to everyone. It gives you a little overview of the project, but also has a full-size paper plan and all that we can, you know, discuss in detail. But our pleasure would be to know if there's anything else that you would need, so that it can be an effective, you know, effort on November's meeting, December 18th.
Okay, thank you. No, just a question. So, lots A and B are nine and 10?
Will all be part of the house then? No?
No, it's, if I may.
Please go.
The house currently sits on a little lot, which we're assuming is probably legal, you know, pre-existing nonconforming. So, what they're doing is carving out, they're basically breaking that lot into three parts.
The lot where the house is.
One part will be the one for the houses.
This whole big triangle.
Right.
And then, so this is A. B is the smaller B with the house, and then this is C over here. Oh, this is B.
And what they want to do is like this, you know?
They want to take this whole lot, take away the two sides.
Oh, okay.
Leave the center.
Okay.
That will remain with the Fish and Wildlife, so there'll be surrounding.
Oh, okay, okay.
And, you know, it's the upland with the house on it, driveway, and just about it. And the issue is, under our dimensional requirements, 32, 40, 40,000 is minimum square footage. 32,000 of that has to be contiguous upland. The something has about 20,000 square feet of contiguous upland, and it's also entirely in the ACEC, and 32,000 should be outside of the ACEC. So, those are the two.
So, it's not exactly like lot size that we normally do, with the technicality of the content of the lot size and the zone.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, because I couldn't understand why it wasn't conforming, because it seems like it's a bigger block.
Right, but they've uplanted ACEC are the issues. That's footing up one of your table of dimensional requirements, if anybody...
And Rochelle, what's the end game? If Fish and Wildlife gives up the pink house, what do they get, and who then owns the pink house?
Okay, well, this is just the step to get to who would be the new owner. However, Fish and Wildlife cannot sell this property, otherwise it would have been done in the first six months. Someone would have stepped forward, granted it, and renovated it after we had gone through this process. But right now, the Fish and Wildlife can do a land trade, as long as it's beneficial to their mission. And so, when we had this yellow book appraised, this lot, it was a cost that would allow them, because marshland is not that expensive, to get like 200 to 500 more acres somewhere in our region for the exchange of one, you know, one acre and a house that they do not have the use for, and spares them all some demolition costs, and, you know, the whole community wanting it to be there. And the region in New England, it's unbelievable, kind of become our identifier to this area, that silhouette, you know? So, they are very excited, they're ready to go, and I was like, we have several steps, you know, so they've let us just, you know, go. We got the appraisal, got the wetlands thing, and then all those lots are not conforming or are in the ACEC, so we thought there might be a grandfather-in situation that would run, but it needs a variance. So, it would then, we are working on a historical preservation restriction to keep it pink, to never have it taken down, to not have, rebuild anything, that the front three sides would stay exactly the same, it would stay the same color on the door, you know, and gravel driveway and the same silhouette. And they can refurbish it as they like inside, and just square off the back, which Fish and Wildlife has agreed to. And they would, of course, be the abutters all around. So, and it would be, you know, set back like it is, so people could still drive past.
Does Fish and Wildlife get the two-side parcels?
Yes, they would still all of those.
Okay.
And, yeah, there's just a little teeny part in the back, because it's kind of like, goes like this. So, the really part in the back was where Bob Colby, who abuts all the outsides of their land.
Yep.
You know, and he's such a nice guy, drove around finding him on a haywire, and I was like, hey, Bob, we need to talk to you about this. And so, he's been very amenable, and they've already agreed to the boundary line agreements, which you will see, the agreements they made are the boundary lines. So, that is, you know, they're just working on the finalized paperwork, but those are the boundaries that will be, nothing will be changing about that.
And once the swap with Fish and Wildlife is made, someone who has some acreage somewhere else has already been identified?
That's my understanding.
And they would then swap, and then they would own this, and this would become a single-family home?
They have said, especially if it retains its AR zoning, that it would, could be used for a single-family, as it always has been since 1925, or low-use educational. I mean, our preservation is to try not to have it neon signs and teeming with cars. If, for example, an arts, at one point, the Newbury Port Preservation Trust was interested or the NAA, you know, to just kind of have it be a quiet office area. But at this point, we believe that it will be a single-family home, which would be really well, smoke coming out of the chimney again.
If this is in the PIOD, then it is limited to municipal use and single-family home?
Right, and I think in educational use, under 40A Section 3 would probably also be allowed as basically its exception.
We haven't really been through what, quote, "educational use" is, so that would just have to be understood.
Sure, for now, I mean, you know, what it's going to be is, what we have done in the preservation restriction is keep it looking the same in perpetuity, or that's, you know, where we're writing it up, and to keep it a low-traffic, low-grade use. At one point, Senator Tarra was very hopeful that it would be like a, just a stopover, research place for marsh and, you know, the area island research, just like the guys from the UNH come and drive and park behind to Peter Hall. He was like, why, maybe that could be that. And he was quite involved for a while, along, you know, with some of the other people, Peter Fitton and stuff, but that didn't seem to work out, so, you know.
If the issue is limited upland area, could there, or might there be some conservation restriction on the area use of the upland area?
I'm not sure how to, I'm not sure that I'm equipped to answer that, but...
Well, you're putting a preservation on the house to keep the image of the house what it is.
Yes.
Because it is in a certain zone, and because it's limited in terms of its size of requirement for what it needs to be, then would you just like to make, I'm just thinking through, that there might need to be some check on the land use to make sure that it's also preserved in kind, because it is limited. I mean, the upland section of the zoning is in there in order to create lots that are consistent and have, that are not too small, so that they become a detriment to the non-upland land around them. So, just, there's a lot going on here, and so, if a lot of people are thinking, like, just, I think other people think it's like, what, you know, a single-family house that then starts, I don't know, putting up flat poles or putting up jungle gyms and putting up things like that, and then there's some uncontrolled check that we didn't quite think through, not that we're trying to limit everything, that's not really what we're trying to do, but we're trying to make it keep the intent that you're presenting to us.
Yes, and we tried to cover most of that. I mean, at some point, you know, we're like, no flower boxes, no, and we're like, can we say no motorcycles? You've got a barbecue in the back, you can't have this. And they're like, okay, at some point, you've got to let them drop their beach towel on their step, you know, if we be. So, we really did try to address that, but at some point, but anyway, and I talked a lot to, you know, Doug Packer and Sam when they were here, and they were, you know, he told me all kinds of stuff, asked out infinite of every possible question, you know, about grading and soil, and what kind of loam, and what type of vegetation, and like, you know, have roots to work, because there used to be bushes and things around the perimeter of the house. We didn't want anybody to put privacy stuff that couldn't have helped secure ground and things, but not, we didn't talk swing sets. But we did talk about the environmental aspects.
Somebody buys the house, and it's quaint for some, but not for others, and then there's 50 lobster traps sitting there over the winter, or there's some bloat wrap on it or something.
Yeah.
Just, the whole idea is to preserve it in its image and essence, and you're going through a process that you're asking for, to allow what other people don't have, and so then, just kind of, just trying to think of what things, you know, go with a normal house that people might have that haven't. And there are people around town that park their boats in front of their house or on the sidewalk and stuff like that. But you're asking for something special, so I'm just trying to think through it.
Yeah, oh, I understand. We did very much the same, you can't see me, I'm smiling. We did very much the same, you know, to the point where our preservation advisors even said, you know, this house is already going to come with a preservation restriction surrounded by Fish and Wildlife, that also may put a restriction or two, which is that it stays on the footprint, and, you know, outbuildings will be, you know, put out, and like a garage somewhere, and all of that. And so, you know, that is going to take a very special person who's willing to take a house with a preservation restriction that's pink, that, you know, so...
Just a question. In the swap, who takes ownership of the house?
The swap.
You're swapping land.
The swap, yeah. I assume that will be a, I just don't want to, you're there yet, because we're not there yet, but we do have some very, we wouldn't be going through this unless there was a solid option of, you know, someone who's got that.
Somebody wants to donate land in the marsh, someone else could pay to make that donation happen, and then they could get this as a lot, something like that.
It will be expensive. This is not a, you know, little shack that, you know, you can grab for nothing. That is over $400,000, that lot, and had a yellow book appraised twice, and so then to restore it with a preservation restriction, that will be, you know, quite a bit. So, we can't control everything, but we certainly thought through a lot of that stuff and did the best we could while leaving it able to be lived in, you know, like that someone would want to take it on and say, this is, it would take a special person, I know what this is, and I want to take it on. If for some reason it was educational, I don't know, people have shrimped out boats and stuff.
If it was a home, I would think the one, the only thing you think about is putting tiny one-car pink garage on. The site is out in the middle of nowhere, northeastern, but you know, you're not putting the house up on stilts where people park under it now. Get some benefit for doing that on the island, but... But is there anything else, Martha, in terms of who else from the town has looked at this? Obviously, town council got involved in order to set this process up.
Right, I don't know that anybody else, you know, other than the people you've mentioned, have been here.
And they, you know, I did discuss with him, just to be sure, like, you know, every step of the way, I've discussed with the folks in the town and then asked some of them have moved on with the new people and in detail, and just said, you know, this is a project we're working on just so that we could make sure, as the shepherds of this, to have addressed it as much as we could and to knock out big surprises. So we come to you after six years of that process.
And you have gone before the slide board?
Yes, yes.
To, to present what you were trying to do.
Yeah, and I've also presented to the historical commission a couple times. We just lost a year or two to COVID, so I have reported every year, year and a half, that there was a big place where things went on hold.
Do we have Peter's letter?
Yes.
Of projection for sending it?
There will, there will be in the packet, yes, he's, he's drafted that.
I did see it, but they brought it.
I don't know that it's in there, but it's in the application materials for the variants.
And town council will be here, because that's, the first step is just to understand, make sure how you got before us, so that that's clear.
Yeah, hold it back.
And then you can present full so that we can, the recording and everyone, anyone that's here can hear and understand. Do we need anybody else? Do we need the historic commission? Do we need, or would we like to ask them to be here?
I think it'd be good to invite them to be here, yeah.
Would we be responsible for petitions or conservation committee, conditions on the house?
Well, we'll, we'll hear their conditions that they've already proposed. And then we, you know, we can think this through.
I have a question, though. This is about a variance just about the lot division, not so much about the house. Would that be, you know, would more, would that be necessary?
Well, I don't want to speak for the chair, but.
Yeah, I'm asking so that I can learn a little.
You know, it, it seems there, there needs to be, you know, good cause for the variants. And I think this is a very unique situation, so in that sense, providing, you know, providing information.
You have to show a hardship, you're, you're in the marsh, you've got limited area, and there's a hardship of the land, but what is, what is the benefit and, and an understanding of why this should be acceptable? And so anything and everything that's favorable should be used to be presented.
Okay, great.
Yeah, public, public benefit, I don't know. Did you include a copy of the draft preservation restriction?
I, I did not, we're, we're.
Are you not there yet?
Yeah, we're still finishing it up, so I had given it to Eric to add a few things. But really, what's, what's waiting, it's just waiting for its legal description and then it meets and bounds and, you know, so.
I think the preservation aspects, she did a very good job of, of preservation aspects, she did a very good job of presenting. It seems like there might be a financial benefit to the town.
Well, there's, well.
In that we will be taking, see if I got this right, we will be taking a bunch of marshland, which is taxed, very low rates, I would assume, off the tax rolls because of we go through a federal agency, but we will be adding properties currently on the federal agency and not taxed as a single-family residence, which I'm sure would be higher.
Right, and so the variance does have to be proved out for the hardship of the land. But in, in terms of the hardship, then if, if it's a non-buildable lot and you have a house on it, then what could you possibly do with it? And then all the benefits weigh in on that side of it. So it's, you're right, you are here specifically for the variance and the understanding of what it takes to get a variance. But in terms of the uniqueness of the lot, then all the benefits, I think, help us try to understand how, how much of a hardship it is just to have a piece of property that you can't build on, that, that the owner has something now, and that, and we're trying to figure out how to make, what to do with it.
Yes, well, I mean, I just, we just want to stay at the step we're at, but, you know, I could tell you more, but we want to stay at the, at the step we're at in terms of, you know, these things need to happen before we get to that place, but we are not doing these things without having some secured assets and interest in that place. And we did check with Tom Hughes, who's a wetland expert, I guess, in addition to Bill Manuel, who did the actual measuring and talked about existing structures and, and can't, you know, if you stay on the footprint or roughly in the same square footage, the, the back would be squared off. There's a bunch of falling down, there's like a little washer dryer, there's a long little, like, one-car shed, and there is a falling apart patio. And that same square footage, twelve feet in on either side, same exact materials and color and not, you know, same luminosities and stuff, could just square it off and will actually make it look better. I, I, um, video color rendering of what that would be. So the idea of, you know, wanting to have, we originally were going to put in a preservation restriction that if someone who purchased it did want to have their very basic garage, as long as it looked exactly like the pink house it was set where the Fish and Wildlife is, okay? And they said, no, so we went with that, you know. We've, we've certainly compromised quite a bit to be able to preserve this little house that means so much. We have thousands of signatures and many testimonials, so.
Are you presenting, or are you the applicant?
I'm the applicant, yes, but we have someone who will be, our attorney will also be coming to second for us.
A variance is a very specific in terms of the Massachusetts forty, after forty in terms of the three possible conditions of which a variance can be sought.
True.
Some people come in here and think they can just install a variance and.
No.
Okay.
We, I'm humble in that regard.
Give an overview, start there, focus on that, and then other stuff can, in terms of benefit, can unfold from there.
We do have an attorney who is very uniquely qualified, who will come and speak to that, because this is where I was just like, gee, I, I really wouldn't know how to address that very specific.
Okay, great, well, thank you for coming time to us, a whole review here.
Okay, I hope I, there is a little bit of an explanation in that, and we appreciate it very much, so I guess.
If this helps us understand, and if anybody has any questions before the next hearing next month, then we can email Martha and Martha can forward it to town council, and we'd be better prepared to, to hear your application like we're hearing it for the first time. So this was just really informal for us. And nothing really here is going to carry forward, other than we're better prepared to understand what's going on.
Is there anything from what you see in that folder that might be missing or that I'd like to show up? Not being able to have you have everything you need.
I would just have the site plan, full size on a board, if there are people here that want to see it. Normally, we have people come up and just talk to us so we can understand what they're pointing to. We usually don't make people present from the podium, but if you think that the public is going to show up to support you or if anybody's going to have any questions, it would be great to have that plan physically available to let people walk up and see exactly what's going on, since it's, it's not an everyday property division.
Didn't realize that when I raised my hand to help. I had no idea, I was just like, oh, let's try to preserve that.
Well, if you didn't step forward, everyone else would have stepped back, probably would have been there.
Yeah, well, yeah, they have their plans to demolish it, along with the camp that was at the very end in March 2016, but were able to stay, stay jacks.
And is anybody from Fish and Wildlife going to show up, or is it just representation by?
I've been in contact with them, and they're just, they believe in the project, and they're feeling that it's in our capable hands. And so they just said, you're the applicant, we approved that. They looked over the paperwork in the application and signed up on it, so I assume they're not coming.
Do we have a letter that assigns you as the applicant, since you're not the property owner?
Well, I mean, I sent you that their project, the guilty officer who headed this project, Bobby, had said, I said, can I please verify after our conversation that, yes, we are able to be the applicant on if they have the Fish and Wildlife, and she said, yes, you are the applicant. So it's not a formal letter, but I did send that to Martha, that I can try and forward it, yes.
Who's Mark?
Mark, um, Mark is the, okay, Mark is the new gentleman that they would like to oversee this.
He's Fish and Wildlife?
Yeah.
Yeah, so he's, he's signed the application, then?
Yes.
So there's this application with his digital signature and yours, okay.
She asked me, would a digital signature be okay, because we were trying to move very quickly.
Sometimes people start talking and their name doesn't match the application, and we're all like, what's going on?
Yeah, no, and, and the refuge manager, too, has written letters to the Historical Society and just a record from my files saying that we are engaged in an agreement, that they are, you know, very excited to go forward, very excited to go forward, which we're really happy about.
We just checked in the boxes, because first, we, if we don't have Peter's letter, we don't go forward. We don't know that the owner has actually given you permission to file the application, we don't go forward. Have all your butters been noticed, notified, or?
That's going to be, go, happening next week.
All right.
We do have all the labels, and we're ready to go. We've got the dates to send to the paper, and we will not drop the ball on our end. So anything that you need us to do, please let us know.
Good.
All right, I very much appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other, other business is fifty-five R Pearson Drive, which is Cricket Lane. Just an update on the project. So as the project moves forward, there was some communication in which to put all the conditions that we had in the approval decision into a list to make sure that they could be checked off and followed through on. Then it's gone on to Conservation Commission where it's going through, right?
Well, it's in process right now. I think that's going to be on their next, the agenda for their next meeting is continued on November second, the November second meeting. And I believe Ann Martin is going to be coming in, too.
So they haven't come to a conclusion on that final pool yet?
I, I know that's been raised as a, as a question again. So I think Ann will come in and sort of present her peer-reviewed information to the commission.
Okay, that's, that's the update, and so there is a, a list, and if you'd like to somehow get it, or maybe we could just email it out to everybody so that we just have it in front of us and remind ourselves what was in the decision?
Right, right, the applicant put together a, a list corresponding to each of the conditions, and I have received some materials submitted to be in compliance with those conditions, but we haven't gone through them yet.
Right, so I think we hold off on the materials.
Right.
Just send out the list so that the members are aware of what was being asked. And then at the appropriate time, probably after whatever happens with Conservation Commission, then we can figure out how to and when to check the boxes on what we ask to be checked. Mr. Kaplan?
Yeah, sorry, I, I don't know if I can interject here, I just, I'm Laura Smith. I live on Pearson Drive now, and I just didn't know if there's any information that you wanted that I could help you with update or where we're, are with this? Or is there something that you don't need any additional information, because it's kind of a list that you're just checking?
It's just a list that we're just checking off the decision, and it's, it's really out of our hands.
It's out of your hands.
For now, until it goes through Conservation Commission. And should it go forward, all those conditions need to be met along the project. So we, we're just trying to get organized as to what that might be whenever, with, if ever, the project gets started.
Is there any new reports that you want results of that we have, that are available? That, because we have some wetland reports and so on that have been done since, but I don't know if you still want that for your checkoff list or not.
I would say that we're, we're going to wait for Conservation Commission to run its course.
Okay.
And then if the project is, is moving forward, the, the list of what needs to be submitted is a public record. I guess if the public feels that there's some additional information that should be submitted, they, they can. It's a little uncharted water, but you have the right to, you know, at least try or submit information. We can figure that out.
Okay, so that would be through a zoning board meeting again at a future time? Or, you know, where should we stay tuned, I guess, is my question?
I guess you stay tuned to the Conservation Commission. And then once that happens, then I think the, the next step will be clearer amongst the town as to what, what the next step is.
Right, I mean, once it goes to that, there, there should be a, a schedule, if it's approved, there should be a schedule that would be submitted by the applicant in terms of, you know, when they expect to start.
Right, if they, if it clears Conservation Commission, and there are no other legal challenges, and the project actually is moving forward, this list that we're talking about would become, would come back to us that we would need to, you know, react to and check the boxes to, and the applicant would submit a project schedule, and then we would understand when these conditions would be met. Some of them are upfront, like, we need to see the final plans of the homes. Others are things at the end that get checked through the view of, of, of built conditions. So I think I would check back with, you can check back with Chrissy or Martha after Conservation Commission has run its course.
Okay, wait for what they decide to do, yeah.
Yep.
Because there's just been a lot of lawyer involvement and new, lots of new, you know, reports and wetlands things and like that is actually.
Yeah, we're not going to rehear it, and we're not going to open it up to, to change it or adjust it. We, we, whatever was presented and how we decided, and we would see that through to the letter of what we said if it continued forward.
In its current form, if there are changes that came out of the concom, then that might be.
Yes, that is in its current form.
It is current, okay, so then that could re-go back to the zoning board again and revisit that?
If it changes.
Depending on what the Conservation Committee comes up with on.
Right, that's what I'm saying, let's wait till Conservation run its course, and then there'll be a direction of, I don't know, somehow legally that stopped, somehow it didn't, and it's going forward as is, or there was something that was changed and our decision is affected because it's no longer the same thing, it will then come back to us, and then there would be an appropriate time to talk to us.
That would be almost a new project type thing, because, yeah.
Or revisions or addendums that would need to be heard and talked through, yep.
Now, can I just ask, did the forty B have a really big estate influence on zoning board's decision?
It does in terms of how it's spelled out, in terms of what our, our purviews and, and decision-making is. And because the town, because there, the affordable housing limit in the town is not met, there are limited means to challenge it or stop it on, on that, on that front. Other than that, there's, if it's approved by mass housing and it comes before us and it meets the conditions and the boards and committees and towns have found it reasonable, then it is kind of hard to stop.
Yeah, big influence, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time, I, we appreciate it, I know everybody's working on it, but we believe that we may be.
And your name again?
Laura Smith, yeah.
Laura Smith, thank you.
Six Pearson Drive, yes.
Have you submitted all of the materials that you were referring to to the Conservation Commission?
Yes, they have them all, for sure, for sure. And I brought them with me, but if, if you get them from the Conservation Committee, that's all I was making sure that it went, followed through.
They really need appropriate body to have that right there.
Yes, perfect, yes, good, good, thank you so much.
Yep.
Good night.
So that's fifty-five Pearson, and then Mr. Kaplan, I guess, found out that he's in a hay zone, and he used to raise his house a couple feet in order to meet where it is. And so the height changes, but the height is still below the thirty-five feet, it's actually still in the twenties. So the question is, what do we do procedural? And I think it's a revision that, I'm not going to say whether it's owners or not, but I think he does need to come before us, Martha, I don't.
Yeah, I think the question is, you know, whether he needs to renotice and have a new hearing because it's an increase in height, or whether, whether it, it could be.
So we have approved conditionally people where we sit here and mark up plans and tell them to do stuff, and we, we make a motion and we approve it, and we wait for them to resubmit documentation in order to prove that out. This is a modification or a revision.
To what was approved.
To what was approved, and so I, unfortunately, yeah, I think he does. I, I don't think we want to grant anything that's not gone through the process period. I know it's minus, diminish, and it's tiny. I know it's minus, diminutest and it's tiny and it's, he, he's well under the height and, you know, how could it be any more detrimental? No one would even know the difference. But this is formality and.
And it's an extension of what was approved. You know, if it were smaller, that might be.
Oh, if the house existed and he came back next year and wanted to add two feet to it, he'd have to reapply to it. So he's got to reapply.
Makes sense.
Then, can we update the website to get Chrissy's name on there and Michelle's name on there? And take Howie's name? I know it's been up there for 22 years, but.
Yeah, I checked it and that hasn't been done yet. I think Chrissy's on there, but Howie's still there and Michelle's not.
Does Chrissy's name need to be on there? It says for administrative, it says email inspection services. I mean, do you want the name on there or?
Sure. The email address, the email address is there, so.
But I just think it helps people if they go there that instead of saying that, they see that we have an admin that has a name in town and then when they get here, they can ask for Chrissy and it would just be helpful.
Sure.
You're part of the family.
We'll turn that one out.
Yeah. And that's, that's all. So that the action is, I really, I need to get to Elaine. I need to get back to Martha. Martha will send an email out to everyone to confirm next Thursday.
Sounds good.
Anything for you, Larry?
Nope.
You good?
I'm good.
Good. You got your big house thing?
I do. I do. Very interesting.
Yep. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.